Commissioner Alexander and Commissioner Snell, thank you. Any comments on the agenda? All in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We are now at public comment. Any public comment? You are limited to three minutes. Please, if you have public comment, give us your name and your address. Any public comment? Any public comment? Public comment has now closed. We'll move on now to item 4A, the minutes from last month's meeting. Chair will entertain a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Snell and Commissioner Baer. Any comments on the minutes? All those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We're now at the medical care facility financial statements. I do not see the medical care facility here. Members, please take a look at the financial statements at your convenience. In the meantime, we will move on to the next item of business, that being Region 2 AAA. Thank you, Madam Director, for being here today. We did get your report, and the agenda has been updated. Members will please, if you looked at the agenda yesterday, you did not see this report. This was just posted this morning through administrative oversight. So, we do have it now, but just want to make sure members know it was just added this morning.
Okay.
Okay, please take care.
Good afternoon, and I'm glad to be here today. On the report, you'll notice that the funding is for fiscal year '22. So, our funding goes from October 1st through September 30th. So, on the report, it's for fiscal year '22. You'll see that, you know, we award Older Americans Act dollars to Jackson Department on Aging, Legal Services of South Central Michigan, and Catholic Charities that serves Hillsdale, Jackson, and Lenoir counties. And our reports show spent funds. So, I just want to make that clear. It may not, they may be allocated more, but the amount reported is spent funds. So, you can see the different funding categories that we award throughout Jackson County, and I won't read through each line, but, you know, there's over 1.1 million, almost 1.2 million go into Jackson County Department on Aging. We also, you know, you see the amount awarded to Catholic charities, legal services. We also do provide the Medicare/Medicaid Assistance Program, which helps folks make decisions on their Medicare choices. And so, we served around 490, or excuse me, 900 clients in Jackson County. And we do that in combination with the Jackson Department on Aging. We have volunteers and staff members that take care of that, but also Jackson Department Aging does that as well. And you'll see that, you know, we saved over $160,000 to clients coming in and getting their Medicare, especially their Part D plan reviewed each year. We also have the My Choice Medicaid Program, which is one of our biggest programs, and that's an alternative for folks being in a nursing home. And so, people that meet the qualifications can be on that program, and we provide care coordination in the homes and other services so that they can have that happen. And so, in Jackson County, it was about 458 clients that we served through the waiver program. And then, Nursing Facility Transition Program was about 19 people, and those are folks that we helped transition from the nursing home to the community. It's an important service. Many times, these folks do not have somebody else to help them. And so, we're able to help them find housing and set up services so they can be successful in their home of choice. And then, we also have the, our Tiered Care Program that served about 200 folks in Jackson County last year. I just want to remind you, our multi-year planning process, it came to a close at the end of September. Our multi-year plan was approved by the state commissioners on services to the aging. And so, now the work really begins to create and work on all the programs in a multi-year plan. And of course, we're thankful for Jackson County Department on Aging to continue to apply for some of those funds and provide those services in Jackson County. Other updates, I don't know if any of you have driven through Brooklyn lately, but we are in the process of building a new office. And I was just touring that this morning, and it's really exciting to see. It's right downtown Brooklyn on the corner of Main Street and Chicago Street, where Dr. Cole's office used to be. And now, there's a big two-story structure there that's going to house the Area Agency on Aging. And it is going to provide a lot of services in the three counties we serve for many years to come. So, right now, the roof is on. The windows are buttoned up with some materials so that they can keep working inside throughout the winter. And the expected open date is April, sometime in April. And I do want to shout, put a shout out to Tony Baer, who serves on our board and has also been very instrumental in helping us with the building project. He serves on the building committee, and he's who I turn to when I say, "What's those brackets right there for?" And we talk through that. So, anyway, it's an exciting time for the Area Agency on Aging. Something else I want to mention is, you may have heard, there was a housing complex closure in Adrian called Riverview Terrace. And they had some, the, all the residents of Riverview Terrace had to be evacuated in July. And so, they, you know, many were, you know, older adults or adults with disabilities. And so, that's been a process we've been involved in to try to help find new homes for them, which is not easy to find safe, affordable housing for older adults on limited incomes. And so, many of them are in the Adrian Hotel right now, but we continue to offer options counseling and things there. We're continuing to look for some funding for community-based options counseling. It's kind of, the example of Riverview Terrace is something that calls for us to go out in the community a little bit more with our options to help older adults make sure they have, know what resources are available. So, we're looking to find a way to put some more money behind that. We recently had COVID and flu shot immunization drive-through in Brooklyn, and it was very successful. We had a big crowd come through our drive-through for flu shots and COVID shots. So, we plan to offer that again in the future. Again, I already mentioned the Medicare/Medicaid Assistant Program. Open enrollment for reviewing Part D plans is October 15th through December 7th. So, we're in the middle of those counseling appointments with folks that want their plans reviewed. We had a volunteer in our office save somebody over $10,000 for the year just a couple of weeks ago. And that's because, you know, insurance companies may change the plans, change their pricing, also what drugs they may cover. So, it's important to review that every year to make sure your plan covers the prescriptions that you use. The other thing I wanted to mention was, we are getting ready for the Public Health Emergency Unwind. The Public Health Emergency hasn't been, hasn't ended yet, but we're expecting it may end January 11th or somewhere around there. So, with that, you know, some of the flexibilities we've been able to offer folks in the community may be ending. So, we are preparing at the agency as well as how to assist our participants with, you know, some of those flexibilities that will be going away. One of those is the Medicaid application process. They weren't doing redeterminations for this whole time. So, those will have to start back up again. I understand that they'll give us about a year for that to happen, but it will be a transition time. You know, people may have moved or changed phone numbers or things like that. So, you know, making sure we can get ahold of people to know that they need to relook at their Medicaid will be an important thing. The other thing I want to mention is, this time of year, we do a campaign. We call it Holidays at Home. And what we do with the money we raise from donations is buy a basic needs gift for some of our most vulnerable seniors. And then, whatever we have left over, we use for an unmet needs fund. And so, we use that throughout the year. We get, we're seeing a lot of requests at the Area Agency on Aging for, to fill unmet needs, and those might be a prescription they can't afford, covering a rent, other things. You know, seniors live on fixed incomes, so the inflation and other things that have been happening is causing, you know, a tightness in their pocketbooks. And so, they are coming forward with some different needs. And some of them are just, you know, 20 bucks or so, but others go up to 500 or 600 dollars. So, we use the funds we raised from Holidays at Home to fund us through the whole year for some of those unmet needs. And then, the other reminder is, just for all of you when you're out advocating, to remember the older adults and adults with disabilities in your community. We're always looking to get our My Choice waiver rates increased. Where, you know, where there's more people to serve with less dollars. So, we're looking for that, as well as the Older Americans Act funding. And then, something else that we're looking as a statewide effort, I happen to be the president of the Area Agency on Aging Association of Michigan this year. And we're looking for caregiver resource centers located in all the area agencies on aging, which would provide resources and guidance for all the caregivers out there. And when I'm talking about caregivers, many of us are informal caregivers for older adults in our lives or neighbors. So, we're looking for funding from the state for caregiver resource centers. And that's what I have for today. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions for Region 2? I, just in general terms, just in case we ever get asked, what's the total cost of rebuilding and the general source of revenue for that?
The total cost is approximately $8 million. And we are doing a capital campaign right now, but we also have, we have the funds to pay for it.
And that's from where?
The funds.
Yeah.
Yeah. Those are funds that the Area Agency on Aging has accumulated over many years. And so, we're putting it back into the community, into services. And one thing that's happened over the last several years, when I started 15 years ago at the Area Agency on Aging, we had 15, or no, 25 employees. Now, we have 88. And so, we need a new facility to handle staff, as well as program needs to have grown.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure, you know, when people see something, they say, "Okay, what's that all about? And where did it come from?" Wanted to make sure members had a general thought of those figures.
Yeah. Um, we kept the location in Brooklyn. It's central to our three counties. There's a lot of support from the Village of Brooklyn and community members. So, we're excited to have it done, and when we do, we'll invite you all to an open house.
Very good. Okay. Anything else? Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report. Thank you, Commissioner Snell, and support with Commissioner Baer. All in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. How are your partner, our Department on Aging, Danielle? How are you, Madam Director?
Similar to Julie, we're probably going to cover a couple of the same topics, but like holiday giving. Last week, I was able to do a Teams meeting with Consumers Energy Minority Advisory Council. And we were able to talk with Genesee County. They were also highlighted within this Teams meeting and share what we do with Meals on Wheels in Jackson County. It was interesting to hear the, a lot of the similarities between our two services, because you don't often get a chance to talk to somebody from a bigger county like that as well. So, I thought that we were doing quite well in Jackson County with not having a waiting list, comparing the number of meals provided between the two organizations, and again, just seeing how they deliver their similar packaging and things like that. So, it's quite interesting. But this is that time of year where they're doing their fundraising drive to help support the Meals on Wheels in our area. Last year, they raised over $4,000. And how that was raised is from the donations from the employees at Consumers Energy. And then, what they do is, Consumers has a matching program. So, the Minority Advisory Council will submit the donations that were received, and then, Consumers Energy will match that. So, it's a great time for us to highlight what we do. And we send out thank you letters to individuals that donate through their, through the website. We actually had a donation probably come in like an hour after we did the presentation. So, quickly got that donation letter sent out. We're also working with local churches and private individuals who want to support seniors in the Jackson community. People will reach out to us and know that we provide services in the community. And so, some of the things that we were able to do so far, one of the churches wanted to donate like 25 seniors. Some of the items that were submitted were like winter coats. There was somebody that could use JTA bus tickets, winter boots, hand towels, bathrobes, gloves, hats. So, our social workers, when they're in the field, will often see areas of need, and those are the lists that we gather throughout the year. And then, are able to go ahead and tap into those as we see individuals that want to support the seniors in our community. I included on the report a couple of pictures from our emergency meal packing that we did. That was on October 27th. So, we were able to work alongside our advisory board and kind of do like an assembly line of packaging our emergency meals. And we did over 700 bags. These all went out that following Friday. And so, what that does is it provides meals when periods of inclement weather, so when Jackson Public Schools is closed down to severe cold or road conditions, that we ensure that our seniors have the nutrition in their home. It is something that we do provide. Anytime there's a new start on the program, within the first few days of coming on service, an emergency meal bag is always sent out. It's part of our program standards. But we do kind of a big blanket here in the, in the fall. And the reason is, we're not sure if people have actually maybe consumed them before the date that they should have. So, it's a way for us to ensure everybody has those again or ready to use. And then, as we have those days of service where we're unable to deliver, then we'll replenish those meals in the community. So, so it was a great opportunity to, again, work alongside our advisory council, and they can kind of work with our staff and kind of see everything that goes into getting those meals together. With our shred event that we did back in September, just to follow up with that, we were able to dispose of 1,149 pounds of material. So, it's quite a bit of service, or quite a bit of material that was able to get shredded. And that assisted 46 older adults in the Jackson community. And again, that was a partnership with Region 2 Urgency on Aging through their Elder Abuse Prevention Grant, that we were able to bring that to the Jackson community. As Julie talked a little bit about the MAP program, I was also going to highlight that as well. We're seeing people on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We average about 31 people a day. And they usually see people between 9:00 and 12:00. So, there's a lot of people that come through the department at that time. Just to highlight a little bit with our volunteers, we have, our longest volunteer right now has, Clay's been there for 13 years. So, these individuals work throughout the year. So, I know we talk a lot about Medicare D enrollment, but it's really is a program that assists people throughout the whole year as they're new to Medicare, or maybe they need to look at a supplement plan, people that might qualify for low-income subsidy. With that service, one of our staff members has been doing this for about 16 years. So, there's definitely a lot of knowledge and people that really value the information that we're able to provide them. I highlighted under the senior comments section to some of the surveys that have come back. And so, when somebody gets their enrollment application right now, the information that we've printed about the plan change, they also get a survey, and those are mailed back. And so, we're getting those in right now. There's just some great comments just about the volunteers and the team that I just wanted to highlight. I'll just read one of them, even, you know, we've got a few of them there. Somebody put in, "This service is wonderful. I was lost and totally confused. These ladies took care of everything. I left feeling so relieved. I cannot thank them enough. And they made it clear for me to understand what would happen in 2023. Please never cancel this service." So, again, we're very thankful for our volunteers that help with that program.
Thank you, Danielle. Questions for Danielle? Commissioner Snell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this goes for the Area Agency on Aging 2. Appreciate all the work that you do with Medicare enrollment. Myself will be going through that real soon, signing up for Medicare. And I got to tell you, I've been looking at all the different Medigap programs out there. And I can see where a lot of people would get frustrated, confused. There's just a ton of programs out there. And, and I commend you for, for working hard to help that be an easier process for our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, related to the Medicare enrollment, yes. In my experience, I see folks who either find themselves overly insured or underinsured, because they really don't know, they don't know what they're doing. And so, I guess the question is, with respect to your consulting for those who are signing up for Medicare, do you have enough help to do it? Or do you see more demand for what you do, and you can only just do, you know, so many hours because that's all the resources you have? I get, I'm curious to know whether you have enough resources to do all of those who may be demanding it.
Um, I, I would say we always could use more volunteers in that area. It's a, definitely an area that people have to have that passion for. There's a lot of training that goes behind that, so you can help somebody make informed decisions. So, there's a, usually a training like once a year that a person will go to. So, some people might be a staff support, where they just want to be a greeter or help in that area. Some people right, want to get right down into the computer stuff and be able to pull plan information. So, definitely, there's areas of opportunity within both of our organizations, whether that person's out towards the Brooklyn area or whether they're in the Jackson area. I know we lost one of our volunteers that had been with us for a long time. So, that's a big empty space that we have to fill there, because that, when you lose somebody within that program, that knowledge that they were able to provide. So, definitely, if somebody has an interest, reach out to us for the Region 2 Urgency on Aging.
Thank you. Anything further for our department? Thank you, Danielle. Appreciate the work.
Thank you.
Carry on the good work. Oh, I guess I'd like to have a motion to receive the report. Thank you, Commissioner Alexander and Commissioner Snell. Thank you. And any questions? All those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, on to the Veterans Affairs Department. Mr. Director, thanks for being here today.
Thank you. Phil McCaskey, Department, Jackson County Veterans Affairs Officer. I don't know if this, if you have these slides, you should have the slides we have here. I'll go through them individually. The first one being, some of the information that's going on within our department from July to September, we kind of got caught up in, because it's a semi-annual report, we reported quite a few months the last time because we had missed with the change of personnel. But August 10th and 12th, the American, we went to American Legion Higgins Lake Advocacy Training. Lisa Laporte, Lisa Redman now, has, went with me, accompanied me there. Because I took her there, she is now an accredited American Legion Service Officer. So, she's, she can assist in claims. And she's also gained her notary through the clerk's office to do the county burials. Veterans Affairs, we have a full committee. We meet the first Monday of every month at 3:00 PM, located in our conference room on the second floor of the HSB Building. Open invite, anytime any of the commissioners would like to come there and attend one of our commission meetings, where we sign the county burials and just kind of go over what we go through every month with a overview with our committee. Veterans Day is coming up, November 11th. We do have an event scheduled for out at the parking lot on the 10th. We have a Vietnam veteran who represents what they call Bucket List for Beans. They are a organization, it's called Bucket List for Veterans, Bucket List Dreams. What they do is, the money they raise nationally goes to help veterans, maybe with that bucket list, whether it be, they recently got married, couldn't afford a honeymoon. These people are, are designed to help them with some of these bucket list things that they normally don't have the, the income to do. So, it's a pretty cool organization. He's got a, I invite everyone to come out on, on Thursday, the 10th. He's got an old 1960s version Aerostream that he's painted olive drab. It looks like it's kind of the MASH 4077 theme. He's a Vietnam veteran himself. And he's been in the coffee business for a long time, and this is kind of his way of raising money for this national organization to help out. So, it's pretty cool. I'm looking forward to it. He's looking forward to it, because he's Ja, he's based right here in Jackson, so he's really starting to get himself off the thing. I told him, whatever I can do, he's asked me to maybe sit on his advisory committee, because when they're doing this venting for veterans, they want to make sure that they have, the veterans truly a veteran, because, you know, it happens. And with the resources we have, we can help, help them on the vending process. So, I told him we would help out, or I would help out personally. And they're a nonprofit organization, and that's what's nice with them. Everything they do, 100% of it goes back to veterans. Next slide, we have on our appointments, just kind of a breakdown what we did through July to September. You can see the numbers in there. Biggest one being claims. I do have in my office, myself, Lisa, who's doing some of the burials, slowly progressing into some of the claim work as her knowledge gains. And we also have the American Legion coming in Monday, or Tuesdays and Fridays every week. And then, then every other Wednesdays, the second, fourth Wednesday of the month, they come in and help assist with the claim work through the American Legion. It's a great partnership. Tons of knowledge. Their representative comes here, comes with quite a bit of experience, and he's also their appeals guy.
Phil, while you're, while you're on this screen, can you remind us of some of the acronyms, A&amp;A, EVR?
So, A&amp;A is, is aid and attendance for our survivors pensions and also our veterans pension that need base pension benefits. So, if they're in need of aid and attendance, because one of the processes is through, when they, if they're on Medicaid, they have to come, you know, Medicaid's a source of the last resort, where if they're a veteran, we have to see if they're qualified for any of the VA programs. EVRs, that's their income verification reports every year. If a veteran's receiving needs-based pension, and they're not at the maximum rate, they can submit out-of-pocket costs for the year that they actually spent for medical and adjust that. And if there's room for more monies, they can, we can send in a EVR form to, to the VA, and they'll adjust their benefit, and they'll give them a lump sum payment to help bridge that gap for some of the monies they paid. Because when they file for pension benefits, they only account for the, what they call reoccurring out-of-pocket medical. In VA's terms, reoccurring is only Medicare Part B premiums, supplemental insurance premiums, and either in-home care providing fees or assistance living fees. They don't count prescriptions. They don't count Dr. Copays, because you're, when you file a VA claim, you're filing it from the day you file, 12 months in the future. So, it's only predictable. Gets kind of hairy there.
Do you get people asking about property tax exemptions for disabled vets?
We do. A lot of the veterans, one of the biggest questions, you know, a veteran has to be permanently totally rated at 100% to receive, to be able to, they get a letter every November to go out and petition their, their township or county where they live for the property tax exemption. One of the biggest questions we have is when a veteran dies who is receiving the exemption, when the surviving spouse, I mean, they really don't know what's, you know, what's afforded to them. We try to, we reach out to them that they are eligible to maintain that benefit, as long as they don't remarry or move. Because the law clearly states, the veteran has to live in the home, had to live in the home, or be eligible at the time before passing in order for the spouse to be eligible for that benefit. So, it's a huge benefit. About 6% of the veteran population gets to partake in that, you know, 100%. And so, it's a, it's a huge benefit when it comes to, you know, their, their income's usually cut right in half, you know, if they take the VA. I think the average 100% rate now, and the average is 3,600 a month. So, if the, if the spouse, if the veteran's death was occurred, occurred by a service-connected disability, 1,600 bucks is the max. So, it's a huge drop. So, that property tax exemption is huge for that surviving spouse.
Thanks, Phil, for putting up with my questions. Please continue.
And then, if you look at the next one, we're phone calls. We did this, I had Lisa fix these graphs up. And you can see where we had 367 calls in July, 471 in August, and 452 in September. We kind of broke that down today before we come over. And that's about 23 calls a day. And then, the average time, we figured the average time between those calls, on the average, anywhere from eight to 10 minutes a call. It could range anywhere from, hey, what benefits do I have? And then, you got to go through the whole spiel of, you know, figuring out where they served over the phone to see if they even qualify for any needs-based pension benefit. Because a needs-based pension benefit is only a wartime benefit. The veteran had to serve at least one day during a wartime period. It is not afforded to any peacetime veteran. Which kind of is bad in a way, because hard times and tough times fall on all veterans, whether they're peacetime or wartime. So, but that's the current legislation we deal with. And there's two of us, we have, these are tracking the incoming calls and the outgoing calls. And that's pretty much... calls and that's pretty much between the two of us. So we spend about three hours a day, three and a half hours a day just on the phone and then fitting in our walk-ins and the appointments we have scheduled daily. So it's, it's fun times. Uh, Mike was over to our office the other day. We were talking and the phone just rang off the hook. It's like, okay, this is, this is what you get. It's just, it's very busy. And, and I'll touch on at the end of this, kind of why the phones are blowing up here lately.
Yeah, I was, I was kind of like, yeah, who you got on calling? Your, your wife calling you back and forth? You know, she knows I'm here.
Shut up. So in the next one is the fiscal year 2021 VA distributions. I want you to recognize that these are, these numbers, when it says 41,000, these are in millions. So they, if you see here, numbers are in the, the thousands. So when you look at, when you break this down, unique patients, the graph here, these were all compiled through the VA's GDX, which is their distribution of what they spend on veterans. And they break it out by state and they also bring it out by county. So this is the county for 2022 or 2021. They don't, they don't report very timely. It takes them forever to do that. But unique patients are veterans who are receiving care at the VA. Uh, medical care, 40 mil, 41 million dollars was spent on veterans in Jackson County for medical services. Um, insurance and indemnities, 673,000 dollars. And that's usually life insurance or if they have the $10,000 life insurance through their, their um service members, uh disability insurance when they pass away. Um, educational vocational assistance, 2007, well, that'd be, yeah. That's in Ed, that's in your chapter 35. That would be some of your um GI Bill expenditures. And also in there is um vocational rehabilitation. So a veteran who's rated at least 20% disabled, they can get on what they call Volk Rehab and that provides education retraining for if they can't work in the industry they were in, get them retrained. And they, I mean, it's a nice program. They get laptops, they get computers. They've, they pretty much have a great program through the VA to help, help these people advance into either new career field or reeducating themselves. And then compensation pension, that's the big one, which is 40, 44 million dollars. That's monies that comes back to the VA, to the veterans within the county. So that number right there, that's money, that's actual liquid coming into the, to the veterans' pockets, which helps out here in this, you know, our economy. So that's a huge influx of money that comes. And the total expenditures, everything is 88 million. We have had some numbers when VA claim processing was taken 12 to 18 months to get a claim through. Now the standard's 120 days. You've, hard pressed, will you find anyone that has a claim more than 120 days? We have a few. Bad thing is when they go past 120 days, it seems like they're like 400 days. And that can be a various of re, uh reasons. One of the biggest thing is federal records. They had a fire in 1973 and veterans' records aren't available and VA will not, will not abandon that search until they've done three, three times they've requested records and then they move on to, hey, do you have records? Do you have anything you can help support it? Try to rebuild your claim. And that's what we do. We sit there and we get the medical, medical nexus letters from the doctors. So when that time does come, these nexus letters are huge because they don't have military medical records to disprove that the veteran wasn't um exposed or hurt. The medical nexus is huge when it comes to that. So in our veteran population, you can see here, they reported that we have 10,215 veterans in Jackson County. And a little bit later here, I'll show you where it shows. Well, the next slide with the three VA, we did a three-year VA distribution trend. And if you look at this, it shows you unique patients. We kind of did a three-year breakdown, kind of show you where we're at. We're kind of staying steady with our veteran population. We had a huge influx. In 2020, we had 10,472 and now they're saying we have 10,215. So I don't know where the veterans, if they've passed away or they've moved from the area. You know, here in Michigan, we have a lot of people that relocate to a little bit warmer temperature and climate. So sometimes when they get down there, they don't come back. So, and, but they're still, you know, that's where they track it. And these are huge numbers when we're tracking them. Um, the Jackson County Veterans Information here, we got veterans by war and veterans by age. We broke this down. You know, if you look at these numbers, we have a huge population of veterans age 65 to 74. Catch up. So if you look at the, if you look at the um veteran by age, you can see where, you know, the age groups that they fit into. Not a whole lot of veterans in that 18 to 34 range. And I don't know why. I mean, I don't know why that is. I mean, maybe, you know, those numbers may lead to some things that we need to look at, you know, what we have to offer veterans maybe at that age group here in the, in the county. You know, the younger veterans, I mean, we are a well-established county, but we have a huge veteran population, but it seems like we're quite aged. It could have.
Nine years ago.
You're probably right. So, and if you look at, you know, the Vietnam, 40% of our Vietnam populate, our veteran population's Vietnam veterans. So that is, you know, a lot of established people that are not going to leave the county regardless. I mean, they're here to stand fast. But this is the, this is the age group of veterans who didn't run and hide when they came back and were spent on and everything else when they come back from Vietnam. They got involved, they, they dug their heels in and they have paved the road for what we have today, which is our VA. And they'll never treat another class of veterans like they treat the Vietnam veterans because they made sure they got involved and they got back and they made sure they paved that way. And if you see a Vietnam veteran, I, I thank them and I get a lot of them that come in and they get upset with the benefits the younger veterans are getting. We didn't have that when we come back. I said, yeah, but if it wasn't for you, they wouldn't be getting those benefits. So huge thank you. And I, and after you kind of relate to them like that, then they see that, yeah, maybe we, we did get involved. So that's, that's huge when it comes to that. And then the next slide is the PAC Act. This was recently signed into um legislation. The PAC Act is a new law that expands VA healthcare and benefits for veterans exposed to burn pits and other toxic substances and was signed into law August 10th of '22. Little bit of history on the PAC Act. Usually when they add disabilities into VA, Secretary of the VA does all of the findings and he presents it to Congress and then it gets approved and then they've already set forth a rating schedule of disabilities. That didn't happen here. The president signed it into law, caught the VA secretary by surprise. We don't have a rating schedule for some of these conditions. So now they're not doing any of the, the PAC Act claims until they put a memo out. You can keep filing, but we're not touching them till after January 1st because it's taken the VA that long to put forth a rating schedule. So people have filed their claims back in August. Some of them filed them in July because, you know, word got out that they were going to do this PAC Act and they're just sitting there. And those make interesting 20-minute phone calls when you explain to someone, well, my claim's been, where is it? Right, here's the memo. They're not going to touch them until January. So it gets a little bit testy, but it's just the way we have. The PAC Act, which covers veterans from Vietnam through Iraq and Afghanistan, is the most significant expansion of benefits and services for toxic exposure veterans in more than 30 years and addresses a broad spectrum of toxic exposure. Our Agent Orange Act, which has been in place since 1983, only covers about eight different conditions. This new PAC Act with, with the toxic burn pit covers about 50. And it even covers if a plane flies through the jet stream above these areas that they said, they're covering that in to infinity. So if you're a fighter pilot and you fly through that area and never touch ground, in Vietnam, you had to have boots on the ground. With this new PAC Act, it's also atmospheric. So it's kind of broad, it's kind of huge. I don't know how it's gonna, I'm, I'm looking for the changes like they did with Agent Orange. They took it from the Navy veterans, they took the Blue Water Navy away. So they, they, they cut out all the Navy veterans for years, which now is going back into, a little bit back into play. But it's uh, it's, it's interesting. And um we did, we did expand one of the Agent Orange expansions that was huge under the PAC Act is they now, finally, they count Laos, Cambodia. Up until recently, we weren't in Cambodia and Laos according to the federal government. But now they've, they've expanded the coverage to Guam, Laos, Cambodia, all of the Thai air bases and also Johnson Station, which was, Johnson Station was a Navy rendezvous point that they used. And they, so that's all been added. So they're expanding the Agent Orange Act. They added hypertension. Unfortunately, with hypertension, it's, you know, they're, it's, it's great, but it's really, where hypertension is going to play a huge role in VA benefits is for the surviving spouses. Because we get all the death certificates for veterans that come through at my office. And if you see on their death certificates, there's a lot of veterans that die of complications of hypertension, which is big for the surviving spouse because that lock gets them involved with the uh disability or the dependent indemnity compensation, which is they died of a service-connected disability, they get the uh 13 or 1408 a month, tax-free. So it's going to be big with them. Maximum, the highest hypertension claim I've ever seen is 10%. They only pay 10% disable, disability for hypertension. But that's one of the things they're reworking to see how disabling hypertension really is. They'll give you 10% for hypertension, but they'll give you 50% for sleep apnea if you were diagnosed on active duty. So it's kind of, kind of a game. It's interesting, it's what makes us come back to work every day.
And speaking of games, I see Camp Lejeune is, is here.
Yeah.
Uh, what, what interactions do you have with veterans with respect to Camp Lejeune?
Well, Camp Lejeune, everything you see.
There's, there's a lot of lawyers out there too. I guess I, there's got to be a lot of confusion for veterans.
We've been writing camp, we've been writing Camp Lejeune water claims since 2017. It's nothing new to the veteran community. What you see on TV, what really happened was the state of North Carolina passed, they changed their state law. Their state law did not allow for spouses or contract employees who worked on the base. In the state of North Carolina, you weren't allowed to file a claim. The law prevent, couldn't, they couldn't file against the federal government. They changed that law. So now if you're a contracted employee, you get the same benefits through this, this Camp Lejeune Water Act. What people don't understand, I try to explain to them, you can't be on a federal lawsuit, get federal benefits such as compensation for the Camp Lejeune Water because you, you can't pyramid, you can't get both. So if per se, let's say someone files a claim for VA benefits, they are not eligible for the Camp Lejeune lawsuit because they're already receiving those federal benefits. And the other half of this is there is a portion of this um under the Camp Lejeune Water for spouses who lived on base. If they get, they can't get compensation, but they can be named in this lawsuit and possibly get some type of benefit. Now, if a veteran passes away of, of the Camp Lejeune Water condition, the cancers they recognize, and they're receiving uh DIC, which is in the dependent indemnity compensation, they would have to pay back. Let's say they get $70,000 in a lawsuit, they wouldn't get that. They'd have to pay that back. They'd withhold their benefits until that lawsuit, whatever they received is paid back to the federal government. Then they can start receiving their benefits. So it's a slippery slope. We get a lot of calls. My best advice to them, if you're, if you have a cancer, will file the claim. If you don't, I can't ref, I can't refer them because it's all lawyers and they're going to take 30% of their retroactive benefit payments. So we don't refer them there, but if they want to and they don't have a claim with us, they're more willing to do what they want to do. They just have to understand they'd have to pay it back if they ever do get that.
Okay, thanks, Phil, for letting me slow you down a little bit.
That's okay.
Uh, are you finished?
I believe so.
Okay. Uh, questions for Phil on matters relating to our veterans? Chair will entertain a motion to receive the report. Uh, Commissioner Bear and Commissioner Alexander, thank you. Any questions? All in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Phil. Appreciate the work you're doing. Yes?
If I may, I just wanted to thank Phil. I think it's very obvious that he has a heart for the veterans, uh understands what he's talking about and spends, and that's not by accident. He spends a lot of time uh dealing with folks, uh difficult at times, but just the, the base of knowledge that he has, I think um, you're worth every dollar we pay you, Phil. Thank you.
And now up is our Health Department. I think Madam Director is here. And.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
And I think the first thing is the Smiles on Wheels.
Yes. So the first item I have is the Smiles on Wheels contract. If you recall, you saw this contract, a very similar version of this contract in June of 2022. Uh, we received notification of funding in June and with funding to renew again in 2020, for fiscal year 2023, which just started in October. Um, in my haste to get that contract set so we could begin obtain, uh, working with Smiles on Wheels and getting our subcontract set with them, um, I did not add in an automatic renewal. So I thought I did, but I didn't. So this is just basically the same contract. The amount has stayed the same, just renewing this contract to go forward with now an automatic renewal in the future.
If I'm correct, um, Mr. Administrator, this would be a recommendation of the full board to adopt this contract? Thank you. Questions with respect to the proposed agreement? Therefore, the chair will recommend or will entertain a motion to recommend this contract to the full board for approval. Thank you, Commissioner Alexander and then Commissioner Bear. Further questions on the agreement? All in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. On to your monthly report then, Kristen.
My monthly report is a lot of um continuing program and continuing information. So I won't spend a lot of time on things unless they kind of changed or there's something to highlight. Um, one of the things I have been adding into the monthly report is kind of where our focus is for the month. We have kind of a month, monthly focus um of the month and often that focus is on um, you know, national weeks that, that other areas around either the state or the, the country itself are focusing on. So last month was Childhood Lead Prevention Month. Um, we have Facebook, there's links in your monthly report to um a JTV interview and uh our Facebook page was laden with lots of information about uh lead prevention and such. Um, it was also Infant Safe Health, Safe Sleep Awareness Month. Um, so there, we also had a JTV spot uh talking about safe sleep. Um, there's a couple of pictures in the report on some things that our fetal infant mortality nurse has um worked on to try to promote that safe sleeping for children. New to this report, um, that I realized uh last year when we added the Health Resource Advocates um to the Health Department, those three positions, um, three plus positions, but the three that are particularly working, um, not in the nursing section right now, um, have been going out into the schools and doing hand washing demonstrations, doing a lot of outreach. They're right now working on um a vaping presentation to begin talking about the effects of, you know, vaping within the schools and what, you know, impact that has on, on, um, on the lungs, which obviously is, you know, impactful for COVID. So some outreach events they did, they participated in the, um, a couple of our areas participated in the county trunk or treat events, one at Keely Park and one at the animal shelter. So that was kind of fun for them to be out there, not only amongst the community, but amongst, you know, our other county departments. So our TPPI and EYT programming are within the schools up and running. Um, also preparing for some uh new educate, new opportunities and classes for the second semester after, after the holidays. Our SNAP Ed marijuana um ends in September 15th of last year. So that's kind of an odd grant that has an odd grant cycle. So in the middle, when we have some extra time from uh October and through when the marijuana uh grant and, or starts, we supplement that with some nutrition education. We have a SNAP Ed grant um that allows one of our uh health educators to go into the schools, into the preschools, into the Head Start programs and give information and have kids taste, you know, different foods and things like that. Um, also promote uh information that goes home to the families. Uh, also talking about safe water and drinking. Last year, they were able to give um Brita Water Filtered bottles to all of the, the Head Start kids that they, that were in those um classes. Hearing and Vision, I think this is the first or second month that we provided numbers for the Hearing and Vision program. Uh, we continue to work just, just. We continue to work just, just as we always have in the schools, but now we have Smiles on Wheels coming alongside them doing the dental oral health assessment. What is not included with here, and I just saw a number last week, so I'll just say it, but is that we have done 200, approximately 275 oral health screenings. So I'll get that number updated as we move forward in, in the next monthly reports that I send you. But we are, with our partnership with Smiles on Wheels for that oral health assessment program, we are really doing well and kind of ahead of the game with the other 15 health departments that are currently starting with that, that grant program. We, our goal, the goal the state set for us for this first full fiscal year was to screen 600 students, and we are already at the 275. So we'll be working with the, the state on what that means once we meet the 600, and, and if there's additional funding to come with that, or how, how that goes forward as, as this kind of grant evolves. Clinical health services, you'll see, you know, basic information that I always provide for you. I also provided a graph in here for immunizations. I've been reporting of, for a little while now, that, that childhood immunization rates as a whole have declined over the past few years, and so that graph depicts that, and, you know, we are working. We had a very busy month at the beginning of the school year, August, September, of kids getting in to get their childhood immunizations, and we hope to see those numbers start to increase. In your mental health, we are beginning the slower process, or the slower season of the soil, or, excuse me, not the soil, we're transferring the soil erosion program out, but the, the field work, the sewer and, or, excuse me, septic and water wells, that those numbers slow down over the course of the winter. So, so you'll see those numbers go down a little bit, but our food numbers have been pretty high, inconsistently high. If you have driven by the Health Department in the last few weeks, you may have seen a big bus parked out in our front parking lot, Lot A. It is, uh, we are partnered, we are basically just providing space for M D H H S. They have a MyChem project that they're working on where they have set up appointments with people in the community and different communities around the state, and this bus is traveling and spending a few days at each location, doing these appointments where they take, take the individual's blood, and they're looking for toxins and, and things like PFAS in there to kind of get a baseline of where those numbers are. So there should be some reports coming out from the state about that. But if you see that bus, that's what it is. It's not our people out there, it's M D H H S, but they were out there last week, they've been out there a couple of different times, so. Last page, Public Health in the Spotlight, there's links on all of those for all of the different opportunities where we've, you know, promoted the health programs that are happening within the Health Department, J T V appearances, different press releases we've put out, focus of November is maternal infant health, so you'll start seeing information on that, on our, any social media we have, and our website, and our J T V. I think she goes the second or third week in November to go on J T V to talk about maternal infant health. There's a synopsis of kind of what services are provided in our maternal infant health. And then lastly, on the side, it's just a, a well-done kudos to our Health Resource Advocates who worked in a summer program from the Mocha Cafe, which was a program to promote reading and things within the, within the population of kids in the city, so.
Questions for the Health Department? Anything more on Arbor Village, or have they done all that they're supposed to? I don't, I can't imagine they've done all they're supposed to do.
I'm sure they have not.
Because they never have, and so-
I don't, but I'll get you updated.
If you'd asked Don on that, I, I always, always get asked about that at Springer Township. Tony has a question. Tony Baer. Commissioner Baer.
Good afternoon. On page eight of 14 here, just interested in some of the numbers, the Personal Preventive Under the Sexual Health, cases in Jackson as of 9/26/22. It ends on September 20th. What's the starting date for these cumulative numbers? The 491 is since when?
These, we per report these numbers based on the calendar year because of the county than the way, than the way you do so, since January 1st.
So these are calendar year?
These are, these are reported calendar year. Yeah, because because our annual report reports calendar year, we do our annual report on a calendar year basis, even though our fiscal year runs on a, the state basis, or the state September, excuse me, October through September, we report our numbers for this on a, on a year, on the calendar year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Chair will entertain a motion to receive the Health Department report. Thank you, Commissioners Snell and Commissioner Baer. Any questions? All those in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Move on to claims. Chair will entertain a motion to pay the claims. Thank you, Commissioner Alexander and Commissioner Baer. Any questions on the claims? I think everyone has seen them by now. All in favor will please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Please take note under Item 5B of Other Minutes, this is the D H H S Board Meeting Minutes of their monthly meeting, and take note that next month, we will see the Department of Aging, the Health Department, D H H S, the Medical Care Facility, and Medical Examiner. We're up to public comment. Is there public comment? Any public comments? Public comment is now closed. Now committee member comments? Any committee member comments? Hearing none. We are stand adjourned at the call of the Chair. Thank you.